All right, so I'd like to call and order the September regular meeting of the Susan Head School District. Everyone present today, let's rise for the.
Pledge of Independence.
United States of America and the United Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As everyone had a chance to renew, we.
So move your proof agenda as president.
Right, and a motion has been made and submitted to approve the agenda. And question? All those members say aye.
Aye.
All of the posts. Motion goes. Uh, reports. Ms. Celebrator, you are up first. What do you have for us today?
Um, not much today. It's the third week of school and we're just getting back into the swing of things. Um, our migration day with ASB welcoming the ninth graders went really well. Um, although there were a lot of awkward silences, but they'll get over that. Um, and we have sports are in full swing. We have a volleyball game going on right now. We don't have a varsity home game for football for until October, but they're still kicking. Um, and uh, but we have soccer is going on and we got our three course challenge for cross country this weekend. So if you want to come out and cheer us on, we would love that. Um, and not much else, just looking forward to a great year. Thank you.
Hey, thanks. Uh, Susan.
All right, uh, welcome everyone. I also want to say, um, uh, welcome to Suzanne Frye, who is, uh, sitting in and, uh, uh, gaining knowledge from Leslie here today. So thank you for being here. Kyle, can you bring up the presentation? All right, so next slide. Um, as I shared at our last meeting, attendance, improving student attendance is a big initiative district-wide, community-wide this year. September is, um, uh, is attendance, um, uh, improvement month. So, uh, that's really nice. Um, what you see up there, um, for everyday matters, uh, school plus you equals success is part of a statewide campaign that really started, um, uh, pre-COVID. If you're probably, you've probably seen signs around town in all of the communities, um, reminding us that, um, every day does matter at school. Um, I also just have some information up here about all of the things that go in to students feeling successful at school, um, physical and emotional health and safety, belonging, connection and support. Thanks, Kyle. Um, academic challenge and engagement and adult and student wellbeing and emotional competence. So we all, we think about all these things and how in the middle, um, those relationships, um, intersects all of those things. So, uh, we've been, uh, all of our staff and, um, have been sharing this information. So far I have shared, um, about our attendance initiative in, in our local rotary and in, uh, chamber meetings, um, in a couple of our towns. So we're excited to, um, to continue to work together on that. The next slide. This is also, um, our last year of our local option levy. The school district has had a long history of, um, of a local option levy, at least 25 years, um, maybe longer. So, um, our current local option levy expires, um, at the end of June. Board members, I kind of have a little FAQ sheet here for you to be able, um, to gather information. And if people talk with you about it, you'll have that information. So I want, I want to start by saying that the primary difference between a local option levy and, um, and a bond is I think of it as, um, a, a local option levy funds people and a bond funds projects. Um, so, uh, the local option levy, like I said, needs to be renewed every, um, every five years and needs to be, um, on the ballot and to be voted, um, by our community members. So, um, these funds that we receive, um, fund approximately 14 teaching positions. So it has a huge impact, um, on our ability to, um, to employ more staff. Um, so the local option levy, uh, will be on the May 19th ballot of next year. Um, we will work hard to communicate that out in a variety of different methods. Um, because, uh, one of the main questions people have is, is this going to increase my taxes? But local option levy is a renewal and it, um, it does not increase. Um, so on this little sheet, but for people who don't have a copy of this, our current, um, our current rate is 52 cents per 1,000 of the assessed value of your property. And this has been for a while and, um, and we're really dedicated to not increasing that. Next slide. Really excited about our seaside education foundation starting up. We've had two meetings. Um, uh, I have listed up there are, it, our foundation board members. Really excited to, uh, to work with these folks. They come with a wide variety of experience with the arts and, um, and right now we're working on getting our system set up. I also really want to thank, um, Josiah Glazier and Anne Soucy, who are our teachers who serve as advisors and, um, and we had a really good meeting last night, like I said. Brian and Sandra, also thank you for, uh, serving as advisors and, um, I myself just to help them get started. So anyway, really happy about that. We'll be sharing more information as time goes on. And that's what I have for you today.
Great. Your questions?
Yeah, just, the, um, I think of the local office levy, um, same, same rate. So I think that's going to be in the last election, was it close or are you concerned?
Well, the last election was during COVID. And it was, uh, it was challenging because we couldn't, we couldn't go out and, and meet with folks at events. We did have a couple like, um, you know, virtual events. But, uh, it still did pass with a healthy margin that it, uh, the local option levy has never, has always passed in our district.
Thank you. Yep. And then anyway, the attendance thing you mentioned, how are we doing? You, I know it's a worldwide problem or epic COVID, but how, how is seaside fair?
Well, um, we'll take a look at like the 30-day mark into, you know, we're still, we're, we're, we're still early. Yeah. So I'll report out next month how that's looking.
All right, all right, tell me. So I just have a couple of things. Um, our tax turn turnover in September was at, on average, um, for this time of year, it was $96,776. There won't be a significant amount of tax revenue until November. Um, for the payroll specialist position, we did hire Robert Half, which is an employment agency to kind of cast a wider net. Um, since this is a specialized, uh, position, um, there were several applicants that were referred to us and we're going through applications and interviewing right now. Um, hopefully, um, we will have somebody hired by the end of next week. Um, but until then I am still payroll and business manager. So, um, uh, the OEBB enrollment ended, um, yesterday. If anyone has any issues, please let us know. We can fix issues, but we can't start new enrollments. Um, and then if you still need to sign up for 125 or 403B or anything like that through American Fidelity, they are onsite this week and we sent out a staff lead email, um, to, oh, and there's a link in there to schedule if you guys need to. Okay, and that's all I have. Any questions? All righty, um, administrative reports. Somebody bind up Jack's running.
Good afternoon, everybody. A couple of things. I know that Ella kind of, uh, talked about a few of them, but, uh, migration day was fantastic. We really want to thank our staff and our students who worked diligently on welcoming. And it's, you know, it's always an interesting thing because, uh, previously we'd have students coming to a brand new school, uh, and so now trying to recreate and, and, um, you know, when students have been in this, in a building for three years and recreate a feeling of, of something new, right? It, it presents some just different challenges, not insurmountable, but just the way in which that, the approach is, is different. And I think we are continuing to learn how to make that better and better. And this year was, um, was certainly better than the years past. So I appreciate my staff continuing to work, uh, on, on that process and the students that are involved. It's, uh, it's, it's been really great. Uh, as Ella mentioned also, recourse challenge Saturday. Uh, if you have not had the opportunity to go and see and witness that race, um, I would strongly encourage you to, to come out and see 1,500, 2,000 high school students competing. Um, how many?
Eight hundred.
Eighteen, right? Seventeen, eighteen hundred and 2,000. So you can kind of come along right in between there. So it's a guesstimation. Um, and we'll have students from as far away as where?
Texas and two from California.
So, all right, this is really a, a pretty monumental west coast, uh, event that is, uh, significant. Not only is it, uh, awesome for kids, but, uh, the way this has, what this has become is a great opportunity for also other organizations, school organizations to be involved and to, to help fundraise and, and such. It is truly a all hands on deck and, uh, you know, Carrie as the meet director, uh, along with Neil and, and Jason and Chad, uh, continue to do such a fantastic job and making this an event that is really special for kids and coaches. And that's why we see teams coming back year after year after year and, and it becomes a tradition amongst their team. So I strongly encourage you, if you have an opportunity to come, uh, and, and do that. A couple of things on the question. Excuse me, Cam Rylea. Cam Rylea, first starts, first race starts at what time, Carrie?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty AM, great. Um, and there are three races, six races.
There are three high school races and two.
Fantastic. So, um, yeah, again, if you have an opportunity, it, it, it really truly is a pretty special event. Uh, two other things I just want to mention, um, we have started working with our staff and on the introduction of the revision of our evaluation system. And, uh, that has gone very, very well. Staff are, uh, receptive to the changes to see that our evaluation system now, is you utilizing the same language, uh, that we are working with our instructional framework and seeing some commonalities in that. And so understand that, um, those things are gonna, are gonna live together. And so that's been, uh, very well received here in the secondary building. And then lastly, uh, tomorrow, our staff, secondary building as a cooperative effort with the county health department to, uh, they're gonna come in to do some educational resource work with us on, uh, on vaping. We know that is, continues to be a significant epidemic, not just here in our community, but, uh, you know, across the country, uh, specifically with teens. And so hopefully the county health department will be able to provide us an insight on how we can support students with, um, eradicating that. So that's kind of what's going on here.
Good job.
Nice.
Good job.
I can't really see everyone who's out there. Oh, Julie, I see you. Oh, and Desiree and Ellen.
Hey. Evening. Um, well, I first of all, I just want to, um, say the year has got off a really amazing start. Um, that's thanks to our staff. You know, we have an incredible school because we have an incredible staff inside of it. Um, meeting our students, connecting with them and building relationships each and every day. So, um, I'm very much appreciate, appreciative of all, all that they do every day for our students. Um, also the beginning of the year is just mainly about establishing relationships with our families and our students and the classrooms. We do that, um, through morning meeting for our K through three students and closing meeting with our three five. So that's part of, um, being a center of plowing for our students. Um, and we also had an amazing open house. So that happens right before school started, um, the Thursday before school. Tens and tons of people, um, hipper excited to come to their classrooms, meet their teacher and drop off their school supplies. We're really grateful to have the extra parking on that day. Still lots of parking up the hill. But now with the extra parking spots, just having 13 extra parking spots, it's, it's so helpful. We have a couple of spots for someone to pull in and park during the school day versus happy to park all the way up the hill. So thank you for that. And then this week, um, we will be finishing up our diagnostic and benchmark testing and then starting our win, what I need intervention and enrichment groups for our students. And, um, in first through fifth next week, and then in October for kindergarten. So just getting things up and going at the elementary. It's a off to a great start.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so in addition to relationships, we also talk about, uh, rules and expectations. So we do it through PVS, which stands for positive behavior intervention and supports. Um, and so what we do in the beginning of the year is we have classes going around the entire school. We look at the hallways and unstructured areas like, uh, lunchroom, the playground. And, um, we call it the circus because, uh, a group of puffins is sometimes called a circus. So, um, we group them up and then we talk about expectations and then we really, you know, vamp up the tickets and the pink tickets and positive interventions. Um, we also are excited to send our fifth graders to the outdoors science, um, science camp. And that was, um, really helpful with all of what Julie did with getting the grant and getting all the funding from, um, you guys too. Um, and then they will be gone for four days and three nights doing some hands-on learning. Um, and then thank you for approving our second grade field trip to campus appointment. Um, that was a favorite last year. So I know they're looking forward to going this year again. Um, and then last I have that our fourth graders will be going to another field trip, uh, the North Coast Land Conservation next month. Um, and so they are getting ready for that in their steam class. They're learning how to write nature during also with Mr. Dior.
Okay. Um, we have four cadet high school teachers working with us. So it's really cool to see them in our building and see our students kind of look up to them and, um, having them in and out of our classrooms would just be really great peer models and build that relationship between the schools here. Our food for kids program, um, which provides food bags to families in need, um, typically once a week for some, in some cases twice a week, we'll start this Friday. And our smart, so start making a reader today volunteer program will begin in October. Uh, last year we had 14 volunteers and we're always looking for more. So if you'd like to volunteer or donate, go to smartreading.org. Um, and here soon in the fall, we have some package here that's going to be, um, on sale. We do that for a limited time in the fall and spring. So check your principal's update for the link to order. So, so.
Just as a reminder, because you two are rather new, Desiree and Ellie are the new.
Assistant principal.
Assistant principals. Do you call co-assist? Or you're just. Just because you need to face it so everyone knows. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I should have popped in between Jeff and elementary, but. Uh, yeah, so I, the first thing that I want to start with and echo Julian is just a huge thank you to all of our staff. Classified and certified, we've had a really successful start to the year and it takes a lot that's behind the scenes and in classrooms and in hallways to really kind of kick off a school year. And so I just feel really privileged and, uh, to work with such an amazing staff. Um, and have, have so many people to ask things and just to learn and grow with. So really appreciative for that start. Um, also we had a really successful shark day. That's our sixth grade, uh, day. We had our leadership come in, um, and really help with that. They led a great assembly. Um, it was a really good and successful start for our sixth graders. Uh, middle school sports is in full swing. Uh, volleyball had their first game last night. They told me today they got their nerves out with Astoria. So they're planning to chill them up tomorrow away. So, um, hopefully it'll go a little better for them. Uh, but, and then we have our first home football game tomorrow night, uh, as well. Uh, we have our cross-country meet, which Jeff spoke to, um, up at the three course challenge this weekend, which is our second cross-country meet for middle school. Uh, so kids are really excited about that. Uh, we have lots of clubs, which is really exciting. Uh, both student, um, sponsored, but then also we have some partnerships with the community. So we had our first art club, which is a community artist that comes in and works with our kids. Uh, we do chess club every week. Uh, so we have lots of different clubs going on for kids during lunch. So really appreciative for that. Uh, Natalie DiRaff will probably start reaching out. Uh, lunch buddies is something that we would like to continue this year. Uh, inviting community members in to connect with some of our students, uh, one-on-one. Um, so that will be starting up hopefully in October. Uh, field trips are going to start. We have our first field trip for leadership, uh, to the OESC fall conference on Thursday. Um, and then we have our sixth grade forest read field trip, um, next week. So already just kind of kicking off into full swing. Um, we also are just in the initial stages of all of our benchmark testing, um, STAR. And then also we use IXL and Achieve 3000 to help support, uh, literacy and math. Um, so should finish that up this week, um, and have some really good data, uh, for academics. Um, so yeah, everything's going well and, and false name. Thanks.
Seen everybody for a while, month, I guess. Uh, I wanted to say that we're very lucky, um, that we are again able to offer our, um, grow your own, um, grants to our staff who are interested in either getting a teaching license or having an endorsement added to their current teaching license. This year we have three, um, classified staff members who are working towards a teaching certificate. Two of them started that work last year. Um, in the past, for example, we've had, um, uh, last year we had two classified employees who were able to go ahead and get a teaching certificate and become members of our teaching staff. Um, and so anyway, that's a really great program that, um, because we were able to get all of our title allocations this year, we're able to continue it this year. Another thing that we do with some of our title allocations, um, is award a stipend to our bilingual staff. We really want to emphasize, um, how important it is for our students in the hallways to see, um, staff members that mirror their, um, heritage languages. And so we like to honor our staff and, um, by saying, hey, that this is a really big accomplishment. So, uh, let's see, in October, we have family, student and staff surveys filling out. Um, we actually, like, I know that, you know, people get surveyed all the time, but we actually do look at the survey results. We make decisions on, um, programming based on what we see as feedback from our students and our staff and our, um, families. So, um, if you are, if you see a, a family survey or a staff survey in your mailbox, thank you very much in advance for calling it out because it really does help us. So thank you. And last but not least, as Jeff mentioned, um, our evaluation system is really starting to align with our framework of instruction. And our two, um, newest principals are going to be, um, traveling to Minnesota later this month to do a workshop, um, on learning how better to evaluate, um, teachers through this framework of, of, about, uh, uh, instruction. So we're very excited for that to happen. Thank you. Uh, I don't see Jason or, um, anyone else out there. All right, thanks, everybody. Um, kind of each academy. We have.
Do you see Mary Ellen?
Uh, Kyle on, on like on the chat.
Yeah. You do have her director's report in your materials.
Refer to that. We will just refer to that. But. All right, all righty. Um, union reports. Is that, that's, yes, we're switching.
Uh, yeah, so Jane is now president this year and so I'm present the left and that's my job. I speak for the union at board meetings. Start of the year is going off pretty smoothly, actually. Um, and we know this more than people just because if there's an issue, people come to us and we talk to us about it. And there hasn't been too many issues. That's great. We're really excited to see our students and get back in action. Um, SCA leadership attended, uh, our annual, um, union consortium training is called the Newark Fall Kickoff, which happens every year in Forest Grove. And so we went to some great breakout sessions, learned some new things. Um, we're going to have our first monthly SCA meeting this Thursday. Um, and we roll with that every month. We meet every month and discuss the things that are happening with our school district. And, uh, SCA would like to thank, uh, the school district for their prompt response to the problem with the contracts. Uh, they found the issue and they resolved it quickly. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, thanks, Beth. Um, OSEA, Megan, there she is. I'm going to pre-apologize. The sun is starting to come down and it's starting to get shadowy on your faces.
Uh, so, um, classified staff are the most part back. Um, and, um, happy to be back with the students and in the building and doing the things that, um, they love and are so good at. So, um, looking forward, um, to having our, um, all classified staff meeting here soon. Um, we, we didn't get a chance to do that during pre-service, so, um, we're going to get that scheduled soon so we can meet all the new staff. We have lots of new classified staff this year. Um, so looking forward to that. Um, and, um, we are, um, we would like to just kind of put out there for board members, um, to think about possibly, um, coming in during the school day and kind of spending a few hours with a classified staff member to kind of learn what they do. Um, to kind of learn their jobs and, and the interactions that they have with students and, um, with fellow staff people to, to just kind of, um, you know, see it's kind of more than just driving a bus full of kids home or serving, um, lunch. Um, it's the relationships that the staff, um, build with the students and the families. So, um, think about that as board members. Maybe you could come spend a few hours here and just kind of hang out. Um, and so that's kind of all we have, um, on OSEA front. Um, and we're excited for the new school year. So, thank you.
All right, um, next we have budget committee and we have a vacancy, right?
Yes, so we do, um, somebody who was on our budget committee is now on the board. We have, um, a vacancy. Um, different from board members, um, budget committee members, um, then it's not designated in a certain zone or area. So anybody can, um, can apply for our opening. So after, um, after tonight's meeting, Leslie will post, um, a form kind of survey on the website. It'll be open for about six weeks and anybody who is interested, um, in being on our budget committee can fill that out. Um, it's just a couple of questions. So if you know anybody who's interested in that, please, uh, direct them there. It's usually about three meetings, um, and, uh, and a lot of numbers to learn and read about. So we encourage, um, anybody who's interested to apply for that position.
We just have the one, right?
We just have the one.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you know anyone, get the word on. Uh, next report is our English language learners reports. We're going to locate backup. Thanks, Kyle. So every year, the, um, Oregon Department of Education publishes a, um, a report sort of on the state of English learners in the state of Oregon. Um, this report is posted on our website and it's also, uh, posted on ODE website. And then another requirement is that we present, um, the findings of the report to the board every year. The, um, the information from the, um, report, it was published in June of 2025, but it's based on data from 23, 24. Um, it's always a year behind. Um, it's always a year behind. So there are, um, you could go to the next slide. Um, we'll actually go back one thing, um, we're just, we're gonna talk about um the demographics, the participation in targeted programs and um. Language development, so next slide. Uh, one thing important to understand, um, that there are four categories of English learners in. Uh, uh, O D E vernacular. Um, and I've got that E and L underlined because you'll often hear to English language learners referred to as E Ls. And that's what that stands for, English learner. Um, and over the years, there's been many different terms, E S L, English as a second language, E S O L, English. For speakers of other languages, all kinds of different acronyms that describe a student body that um. Comes to us with a cultural and linguistic history that is uh. That is rich, but they also need development in academic English. Um, so we have current E L students. We have former E L students. But let me go back, the way that a a student is identified as an English learner is that as an incoming kindergartner. Um, they fill out a language use survey, and if there's any other language on that piece of paper. Then our E L D team screens them with a tool called an ELPA screener. It's an English Language Proficiency Assessment Screener. If those students qualify for services, then they become a current E L student. Those students, any student who is being served in our um English Language Development Program takes the ELPA test every single year. Once they get um scores of four in all four domains, speaking, reading, writing and listening. They exit the E L D program. Um, because studies have shown that it takes approximately seven years for a student to really. Um, become solid in their academic language. Um, we then monitor all of our students who are former, that that don't um attend E L D classes anymore. They're monitored for four years. Um, and we monitor basically their academics, their behavior, their attendance, all of that kind of stuff to make sure that they're um. They are progressing kind of at an expected rate and that um. Their, their, you know, language isn't interfering with um academic success. After those four years, then they are um considered an ever English learner. And this one kind of always trips me up. They're not learning English anymore, but they're still considered by the state as an ever English learner. So an ever English learner is somebody who, the number that the state uses is all the um former. English learners and all the current English learners. Um, and then we have never English learners. Those are basically monolingual students who never qualified or were el- eligible for E L D. And it's kind of important to note that um, the reason why we have all of these different designations and the reason why we identify students. Um, is because what we want to be able to do is offer every student as much um support as necessary. And so when we're talking about eligibility for E L D services, we're talking about whether or not they qualify. To be able to be served uh with an extra program that will develop their language. So those are the categories that you see in the um thing. And so, E L, English learner, E L D, English language development. Uh, and for those of you who are kind of new to the board, new to uh this whole world of education. You are just gonna be swamped with um acronyms from now. Until you're gonna be quite just like three B of acronyms. Um, in uh the models of English Language Development Instruction, we have something called Sheltered Instruction. And that is where um general ed teachers, content level teachers are trained. Um, in ways of delivering their um, their content. Um, so that uh students who are learning English or developing their English skills. Have a better way of um being able to absorb or understand that language. So it might be that they uh preload vocabulary words. It might be that they do short bursts of instruction with a lot of processing time. So that's kind of what Sheltered Instruction is. Pullout, that is when um a student is pulled out of their um mainstream class or their their uh. Homeroom class to a specifically designed um. English Language Development Class, and that's a class that's just, just focused on um language, you know. Uh nouns, verbs, uh agree noun verb agreement, uh pronouns, you know. Really sort of systematically working through language, not content, but language. Um, Integrated E L D is when uh and some of you, a lot of you guys in this room have taken um. Our C M Institute, where teachers really learn how to plan. Um, their content lessons kind of parallel with the planning of how to make um content. Um, understandable for their language learners. So Chuck, were you ever um, did you ever do C M? Okay.
I did not.
Okay, um, and then E L D class period, that's very much like a pullout, but when we're at the high school level or the middle school level. That's like a, you know, a seventy-two minute class or a sixty-minute class as opposed to a thirty-minute class. Um, in Oregon, uh in the year twenty-three, twenty-four, eleven point five percent of all students. Were current English lan- learners, roughly a hundred thousand students. Um, the enrollment of English Language Learners has um gone, oh, actually, what, it it ranges from zero. To forty-five point eight percent. In other words, um, there are several districts that have no English Language Learners. And then Woodburn is our largest uh district with E L learners. Forty-five percent of students in Woodburn are English Language Learners, forty-five percent. The population of E L students is increasing, while overall student enrollment is decreasing. So that's a trend that's very interesting to watch. Majority of E L students are in elementary school. Um, fifty-nine point two percent of those hundred thousand across the state are in elementary school. Which makes sense, because by about fourth or fifth grade, they might be ready to exit their E L D class and become a monitor student. So as the um grade levels increase, the percentage of former E Ls and monitor E Ls increases. Uh, Spanish is the predominant home language of our current um English Language Learners. Although in Seaside School District, we also have students whose um heritage language is Thai, Vietnamese, Mandarin. Um, Hindi, um, and so a couple others, actually. Um.
Do we have, who who takes these on, or do you happen to have people who speak these languages?
Well, that's a really good question. Um, when they're in, well, first of all. Um, we have a program for our newly uh recently arrived students. And so they get some kind of real one-on-one instruction from the E L D team. Um, to kind of ease the way into general education classes. Um, but yeah, no, our E L D teachers, um, we have several that speak Spanish. We don't have any that speak Hindi or Thai or Vietnamese or Mandarin. So they are really kind of um teaching, you know, the old school of um total physical response. Uh, I I I was an old E L D teacher a long time ago, and total physical response might be something like, you know, the teacher comes up and says. Take, right, you know, so that kind of um, you know, using gestures, using pictures, using repetition, that sort of thing. Kyle?
I have a question.
Yes, please, yeah.
I understand Woodburn's situation, there's a lot of languages there, have been for years, but I'm picking up here that there's. Two hundred and forty-seven home languages that have been documented. But only, but there's sixty-five percent of the districts are claiming they have no or almost no E L students. That, that doesn't connect.
Well, you, I mean, we have what, a hundred and ninety-seven districts in state, and so you're gonna have a lot of really small rural districts. Um, and you're gonna have, I mean, um. Yeah, um, it does feel like an anomaly, but I think it has to do with the fact that we're so spread out. You have so many really small districts.
So you think it's accurate?
Uh, yes, I do, because it it all comes from our student information system, which feeds into O D E. And all of those numbers are accurate. But again, we're looking at data that's over a year old, right?
Yeah, and some just, if I can interject here, some districts in the Portland area, for instance, like Reynolds School District. Um, they have students that um represent more than fifty languages. So while there's some that don't have any, um, uh, there are definitely some districts that support, you know, fifty or more languages in the district.
And also Chuck, um, at O D E, if it's like five percent or less, it's considered statistically insignificant. So that like, maybe in Lake Las Vegas, there's one or two kids that's, right, so. Uh. Yes, I'm sorry, Sandra.
That's okay, um, this is may not even obtain a, but um, the decrease that you talked about. Is that not, that's just leaving public school and maybe they've gone homeschool, maybe they've gone.
There's a combination of a lot of different factors. Um, overall, um, enrollment has decreased, there's been a lot of kids that have moved to online schooling. And then also it might have to do with um which demographic sets are having more babies.
Do you find that this is an area that needs um more support in our school system? Or are you finding that we're su- supporting this pretty well?
Um, yes, and yes. I think that we have an excellent, um, we have an excellent English Language Development Team. We do just, like, our school district very much mirrors the state. And one thing that you'll see in this big report that you have is that um. Students in elementary school tend to graduate out of E L D classes at a higher level than students in middle school or high school. And once those students have graduated out of the program, they become kind of, they have more academic parity with their monolingual peers. Than kids in the um, uh, who are still in an E L D class in in high school or middle school. So, uh, we're doing an excellent job because we're graduating a lot of kids out of um E L D. And yes, we need more support. We have thirteen at the high school this year, we have thirteen recently arrived students. So um, that means that they have um just arrived in this country from various countries, uh, Mexico, Guatemala. Um, India, um, and Thailand and Vietnam. Those uh students need a lot of support, you know? And sometimes they come to us with limited um formal education. Um, but you know, as high school students or middle school students, so. Yes, we do an excellent job, and yes, we always need more support in this area, yes.
How, how was it funded? Is it from the O D Oregon Department of Education or?
We get a very nominal amount of money, it's a Title III grant. Um, and we spend that money, we feel like because we have such a high percentage in our school district of E L students. A thirty-minute pullout session in elementary school isn't gonna be adequate, you know, for all the kids that. Need to make as much progress in languages they do. So we're really committed to training our teachers in um something called constructive meaning. Which what I I explained to you, that's kind of the embedded E L D, that's when we're training our teachers to be. Kind of think with two hats, I'm a content teacher, but I'm also a language teacher, so I need to be thinking about. How to plan my lessons for my uh students that need language development while I'm teaching social studies or while I'm teaching algebra two. Um, and then one thing that we really try to keep an eye on across the state and in our own district is how. Though that demographic group um participates in targeted programs. So for example, um eighteen percent of um our E L D students. Um, across the state have been identified um as needing special education. Whereas only eleven percent of them were actually identified as uh an English Language Learner. So that is an area that the state is um really focused on. Um, making more even. Uh, fifty-two per, fifty-two point eight percent of E Ls um experienced poverty. While only thirty percent of monolingual students experienced poverty in two thousand twenty-four. Um, current English la- language learners um are meeting on state standards at substantially lower rates than their um. Monolingual or formal um English learners. Uh, and that is, um, again, these are, this is the state, but it is exactly the same here in in Seaside School District as well.
Well, to that point, and this is to to Kat's point, is she asked like, how are we doing resources and everything else? Do we have like a side-by-side comparison for those? What are the three key metrics that you would look at? To 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 determine that, that how are we doing compared to the state and these three metrics?
Tell me what three metrics.
Right.
No, you tell me.
That's what I'm saying. I I don't know, I'm looking at the report. And it it doesn't get into the platyp or seaside, right? It's just a large piece.
Right.
So what, when we say like, how are we doing?
Well, I look at, if if you wanna know what I'm looking at, I look at our math scores. I look at our E L A scores and I look at our graduation rates.
Okay.
And um, like I said, at the elementary school, former E Ls are um. Have more parity with their monolingual peers than current E Ls. Um, in the high school and at the middle school, like I mentioned before, academically. Um, they, they're substantially lower. Um, and so that's what Kat was saying, do you have enough support or it's like. It, they need a lot of support, and so that's an area that we focus on quite a bit. Um, in terms of graduation rates, current E Ls um are graduating at about seventy-five percent. Um, in four years, so that is um. It's a, it's, it's slightly lower than our um, our regular graduation rate, but um. It's more like, um. It's more like trying to make up that academic gap between, um. Especially with our recently arrived students who are in E L D classes in high school or in middle school. That's kind of where the big uh rub is, so I guess, Jason, my three metrics would be E L A math and graduation rates.
No, that's, that's exactly what I'm asking, and so I guess that would be the question is, compared to the state. Where are we beating those averages? Where are we missing those averages and what can we do about it?
Um, well, let's see, uh, current English learners are meeting.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to put you, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I think that is like, I I don't expect you to know that right now. But I would expect us as a group to talk about that when we have a twenty. when we have a twenty, very meaty report with lots of graphs. Um, to talk about that and then do those side-by-side comparisons and whatever the right metrics are. And I I don't know what those are, but.
So Kate, can you, uh, if if we talk about one of the three areas where you're looking, English Language Arts, can you talk a little bit about the new program that we're starting in middle school this year?
Well, yeah.
For the English um, for the English class?
Yeah, um, and I would just say, I, all that data, Kate, first of all, the data that you're asking about, the side-by-side comparison, when um, when you look at the uh, added glance report cards, when they get, you know, released next month, I think you'll be able to see some of that side-by-side data. That's a really good place for you to look. Um, one of the things that we noticed um was that we were sort of stalling um with um progress at the middle school. And our model at the middle school was a push-in model where the um English language development teacher was kind of going into classes and supporting teachers, helping them plan lessons. But what we decided was that it wasn't targeted enough. It wasn't enough time and it wasn't um specific enough to the actual language needs that those kids had. And so with Jeff, like being part of a small school district is a blessing. So Jeff and uh Wendy and um myself and the ELD coordinator and Susan, we sort of sat together and said, how can we problem solve this? And we ended up turning our um, having our uh middle school uh ELD teacher teach an actual English language arts class. So now those kids, instead of getting sort of um, I I don't want to say haphazard, but not systematic and not everyday language development. Now they're getting that every single day um for sixty minutes for a whole middle school class period. So we were hopeful that like in a year or two year, two years, we'll really be able to see that that made a difference to have such a big programmatic change. So that's the kind of thing that, you know, we look at the data and we try to make programmatic decisions to see how we can improve things.
Is this one just the middle school or is this?
This is just the middle school because middle school is the only school in our district that didn't have a systematic language development class. Uh, so anyway, I'm 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 happy to talk ad nauseam about all of this, but I know that my um peers back there are like, hey, shots. I'm going to leave, but if you have any questions, just give me a call, give me a email and I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See. Well, point of order, did we, is there any chance we could take a break and just get some air?
You're taking a five minute?
Yeah.
Don't do that.
Let's make a five-minute recess before public comment starts to get some fresh air. All right, we are going to re-adjourn. Yeah, this is the mission. Resume, resume, thank you. Sometimes. Uh, resume the board meeting, here we go. All right, it is time for public comments. Can we leave this real fast? Um, the meeting will now be open to receive public comments. We value the time and initiative members of the public take to share their thoughts with the board. The board's role during public comment is not to immediately respond, but to listen. If follow-up is necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do so. Remember that we are all role models for our students. Please share your thoughts respectfully. Should any public comment include complaints regarding a personally identifiable staff, identifiable staff member, the board chair will direct the speaker to the proper administrative process found in board policy KL public templates. Speakers will each have three minutes to express their thoughts. Um, if you are on the Zoom call and would like to have a public comment, if you could put that in the chat so Kyle can see it. We will start with anybody who would like to have a, to say something that's here in the building first. And if when you come up, if you could come up, stand please, so the camera can see you and just state your name, so we know who you are. Anyone? And Kyle's gonna keep us on time.
And Jeff?
Mm-hmm, he's on time.
Um, Megan, I'm Karen. Um, I am a special education assistant here um at the secondary school and I have been with the Seaside School District since twenty nineteen. In those years, I have held many different positions spanning across all three schools. As most of you know, I was informed in April that the district was removing me from my position as the health assistant to allow for an additional RN. This has resulted in calendar changes to my, to my yearly schedule for an equally in a loss of twenty-one working days, a hundred and sixty-eight hours, and over thirty-five hundred dollars in wages. As a result, I have had to pick up an additional job just to make up those lost wages. I am asking that the board consider what staff have to do to make ends meet. Many of us have multiple jobs that we work year-round and are still struggling to put food on the table or gas in the tank so that we can come to work. We work every extra duty sporting event that we can just to make those few extra dollars. The staff are tired of having to make these hard decisions every month. They deserve to be able to not have to decide whether they feed their family or heat their house in the middle of winter. The bargaining team knows that the district is not responsible for the economic state we are facing, but it is the district's responsibility to provide a warm, welcoming, consistent, safe learning environment for students. The best way to find and retain the quality staff that these families and students deserve is by parent pay- paying a fair wage. Do better, Seaside School District.
Next, anyone else want to say anything?
I would.
Okay, great.
My name is Mike Waldney and I am a special education assistant teacher. Um, actually, me and my wife are a team at Pacific Ridge. I know some of you, great respect for you. Um, this is my first board meeting. Um, I came because my son is in government and that sometimes a kid can actually move mountains and get you places you need to be. Um, I've heard lots of different things. I like to be a person unlike our current damn, current uh, what do you call it? Political uh realm in the United States, I like to hear both sides of the story. Um, I've heard lots of different things. I've been asked to come to these for, I've been here five years and I'm so thankful that I am here at Seaside School District. Thank you so much for having me. Um, uh, I work in a pretty tough classroom with some really special kids. I'll say special because they are, as all of our students are. Um, I believe in all of them. They come from horrible situations, some of them horrible homes. I, we had to call DHS today on a, on a situation and that's a really tough thing to do. I also want to say as a part of this team and this family, it's not, it's not team to me, it's a family. Um, I've been treated so good here. Um, I have people behind me that have welcomed me. Um, and I've, I have a history of working in mental health in in uh outpatient and inpatient, some of the toughest places in the state, one in Eugene. Um, and uh, I could not, I was also, I'm a veteran, I was combat medic for seven years in the army. And I can tell you that there's only a certain amount of people that I will let in my foxhole, back me up. And every single person behind me and even some of you that I know, Brian would be one of them, Susan being another, they could also be in my foxhole, okay? Um, I don't, I only know one side of the story so far. I haven't heard the second side of the story of what's going on with all the wages and all of the stuff and all the turmoil. And now we, I guess, going to mediation. Um, I want you to know how, for me, how um blessed I am to be here and how lucky, and this is the best school district I've ever worked in, hands down. And I'm not just saying that because you're all in front of me, it's the truth. And the people behind me are the reason why that is too. They're very special people and they're very hardworking people. They're very loving people, it's not just about teaching, it's about loving the kids and building a foundation with them. And once you get that trust with them, you can move mountains. And it's, it's not, it's about, it's of course about wages, but it's also about the appreciation that people feel when they're working and they're working as hard as they do. And that's, I think, it's a good idea to have some of you guys come down and check us out. You're welcome to come to my classroom, love to have you. And yep, and I'll set up chat after this, but I appreciate all of you and I certainly appreciate, as should you, the people.
Anyone else? Welcome. Kyle, do we have anyone on Zoom? Nobody?
No, no messages.
No messages? Or no messages, yeah, I think there's people there, but. Okay, last call. Okay, thank you. Thank you, um, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Um, did everyone have a chance to look at the consent agenda?
Yes.
Right. Anyone like make motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Uh, motion is made and seconded to approve the consent agenda items as presented, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
All right.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Um, we have some action items. It's like the first one is request for out-of-state trip, Pacific Ridge Elementary, which I know Desiree alluded to.
Yeah, so six point one is um, uh, in the document for the secondary readers to take the trip to Alaco. This is the, I believe, the second year that they've done this. Right?
That's what sounds fun.
So as you know, um, any, any out-of-state trips need to be approved by the board.
Yes, that is true, any time that we take the kids out of state, we have to improve that.
Uh, any show proof? It went away, I'm sorry.
My second.
I'm sorry, I moved to approve Pacific Ridge Elementary of state trip.
And that was seconded by you, Kevin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the request for the out-of-state trip for Pacific Ridge Elementary. Any questions? All those in favor?
All right.
Anyone oppose, all those opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, next one is another request for out-of-state overnight trip for the high school softball team to Phoenix, Arizona.
Oh, fun. So while this uh, while this trip doesn't happen until March, um, this is brought forward so that the softball team can start fundraising for that.
I do.
This is the second year they've done this?
Yes.
Last year, we did it last year, okay.
Yeah, and it's a tournament or is it?
I think they believe they do go play a tournament.
It's a competition, uh-huh.
Yeah.
It's gotta be. It's like a team bonding and they'll, and they play some softball and they watch some of them stop, I think. Was there some spring training? There's some, yes, I believe so. Is this all funded?
Well, let's take a motion and then we'll go now.
I moved to approve the high school softball out-of-state trip.
Any questions?
Yeah, just curious on the funding piece.
It's all fundraisers.
It's all fundraisers.
And what, what's? Are these just coaches or are they school employees that will be just, just?
The coaches.
Just coaches, okay.
Yes.
Um, any other question?
Their parents go to.
Oh, okay.
They make them.
Just coaches or?
Yeah. Sure, on their own, if you go last year. No, Jen went, then we're good. Yep. And plane did, did all the stuff, so it won't take care of.
They're gonna invite her.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, any other questions? All right, motion's been made and seconded to approve the request for the out-of-state overnight trip for the high school softball team to Phoenix, Arizona. All those in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion carries. Um, the next one is a gift approval for Pacific Ridge Elementary.
This sounds fun. For silent disco headphones.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So, um, a So, um, uh, if you haven't heard of Donors' Shoes, um, uh, teachers or anybody can put something in when they uh are, are fundraising for um a specific thing. Just silent disco headphones here. And uh, the loft in New York uh reached out and this is um for Mr. Speck orders uh third grade class. So, we uh are excited about this and um you can definitely go to his class and wear the headphones.
Cool.
I moved to approve the gift of silent disco headphones, value nineteen hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighteen cents through Donors' Choice for Pacific Ridge Elementary.
Second.
Um, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the gift approval for Pacific Ridge Elementary silent disco headphones. Any questions?
What is a silent disco headphone?
I think it's those headphones you put on and they can hear the music, but you can't, like, you can't hear what I'm hearing.
There was one, he said a resort where you're in Mexico, you're about long going. And so you go there and they have like four or five different songs playing, so it could be one song. The color on the thing will tell you that Chuck and I are listening to the same song and Kat may be looking some other color, so. But then it, it's super fun, but you know, you could have a, you know, you could sit there and watch it not be blown out with the speakers, because it's quiet, yeah.
And I think the reason why he dropped them is so that music won't bother the kids, so they can choose to listen to the music. Or they'll have some white noise when they're working quietly, right?
Yeah.
So they can all have their own volume and listen to the, that they want to do, but, or just have white noise that next to them tapping.
This is totally different than what I just said then. Okay, okay, well, this is a party thing. There are people who are dancing.
Julie, aren't the parties, Julie, don't these also double as like noise cancelling headphones as well?
Yeah.
Oh, that's cool. Which can be really helpful.
Any other questions? Are all those in favor?
Alright, alright.
All those opposed? Alright, motion carries. Um, okay, board reflections and announcements. Um. Can I just talk about the book here, so I don't forget? So last year, we were presented with a book called Good to Great. And we talked about as a board doing like a book club, like a book study. But then, you know, life happens and we didn't do it. So we thought, do we still wanna do it? Do we wanna revisit it? Um, Susan and I have kind of talked about a plan. It's kind of like a chapter a month. We read it, we come to the board, during reflection time can talk about the good to great. Is that something we still would like to do? We have a plan.
Sounds like an attainable goal.
It's an attainable goal.
How many pages are in the chapter?
Okay, they're not very long.
And. Month, there's also this little um study guide. Which uh will uh, you know, give you some um, uh, give you some sun. I think it's, yeah, I think it's tangible.
If we're all in agreement, then let's read it. Uh, we're doing the first chapter this month. We'll send out a schedule.
We'll send out a schedule.
We just need one thing is uh, you need to make sure we involve. So we will make sure you get a book.
Yeah.
Yes.
Get a book.
But you also have schoolwork, so if you.
Yeah.
Right, so I just wanted to ask, we talked about it last year, we didn't do it. And so maybe we just start fresh this year. And apparently it's very big, Chris Quarter just finished it, isn't it, it's not on the board anymore, so it was very. The way he went from good to great. Okay. Um, next is the reminder about the OSBA regional meeting.
Is it, is it too late to sign up? For that?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Um, uh, there was in the email that went out to you, there was a link to register for it. Um, they are providing dinner. I know some of you may have emailed them and to register.
Yep.
Um, and I'm sure that they got your information if you did it that way. Uh, there's, there's a um, uh, public meetings training. Before the regional meeting, that would fulfill your requirement for public meetings training once per term. Um, there's also other options for that, but if you wanna choose to do that live training, that would probably be a valuable resource as well.
One-stop shop.
Yeah, no, is that fine?
Yes.
Valerie does reply.
Yeah, Valerie, wait.
And then the OSBA annual convention, which is fun, save the date, November sixth through the eighth.
Not to save the date, but please let me know if you're attending. I think I've heard from most of you. Um, but I will work on your hotel reservations and your conference reservations, so people send me that information, they, you know.
Should be highly recommended.
Yeah, you get some really good information, meet with other school board members. We get to kind of hang out as a team. Um, so it's a good opportunity to learn and connect with people. Yeah, so let Leslie know if you haven't already.
Now, having done it, any details I should know? Like, do people go on Thursday, Friday?
So I, yes, you can go the whole time, but if you can only, like, I know last year only went one day because the football team was in the playoffs and my son played. So I just went the one day and then I went to football. So if you can only do one day or part of it, that's fine too.
Most people are gonna be going in on Thursday evening, checking in, so they're there Friday morning to begin the conference. Friday's kind of the full day, right?
Right.
Yeah, and Thursday is kind of, Thursday is kind of a pre-conference.
Yeah.
Which is um, uh, you know, really beneficial for um people who serve in these role. Um, and then it, it starts seven-thirty or so with breakfast on Friday. And so Friday's a, a whole day and uh Saturday's usually about a half day.
So if I can be there Friday morning.
You could.
Yeah, I wouldn't go from here. I'd just go for my son's things. I think breakfast starts like seven-thirty or something.
Yeah, they believe that, for sure.
Unless they have responded, I think, but I'm not gonna be able to, okay.
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
I have one additional announcement. I think it's a lovely idea for board members to get into the schools and maybe see what's going on and volunteer. Anyone who volunteers under schools has to have a background check on file. So if any of you don't already have a background check on file, you would need to do that in order to volunteer. And there's a link on our website for that.
How long are the background checks good for?
Three years. If you are.
A lot in elementary school, but not since they've been older.
If you're. I can check for you, I'm still good.
Uh, with the volunteering, uh, I've been able to go in because I knew what times there was a need. Do you just show up and then, hey, I'm gonna wanna hang out with, you know, classified person? Like, is there specific times or?
Yeah, so I would recommend that, you know, maybe if there's some specific things you wanna see, connect with the building admin. They can, they can adhere the schedule with you and that way you can um, uh, you can see what you'd like to go observe.
Alright. I think that, thanks. Any other board reflections or announcements?
Yes, I have one.
Yes.
Those of you that were unable to see, uh, Shannon, the first day of school. What an, what an incredible job you did speaking to the staff at breakfast. Welcoming everybody back. I could see the teacher coming out of it. And it was, it was really exceptional.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, um, the board will now take a recess from the regular meeting to meet an executive session. Representatives of the news media, news media are allowed to attend. All of their members of the audience will be asked to leave, if you like to, but, or move to the Zoom waiting room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the execs, executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as announced on this agenda. No final decisions may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, the meeting will return to open session and any waiting participate, participants will be readmitted to the meeting. During the executive session, we will um. Be discussed the classified negotiation update description. Per ORS one nine two point six six zero two D to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations. Um, we will also have an OSBA grievance hearing. Which per executive session, ORS one nine two point six six two B to hear complaints or changes brought against a public officer or employee, staff member or agent unless that person requests an open hearing. And then also, uh, superintendent goals check-in uh per ORS one nine two point six six zero two I. To review and evaluate the performance of the superintendent or any other public officer or employee or staff member unless that person requests an open hearing. Okay, so we will now take a short break and reconvene, there's one, five, ten, ten minutes? We ten minutes? Five, okay. Alright, thank you all.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, the um, this, we are going to reconvene the regular session of the board meeting.
Madam Chairwoman, I would like to make a motion to uphold the decision of the superintendent. Uh, article eleven point four E vacations.
Any seconds?
I will second it.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to uphold the decision made by the superintendent in regards to article eleven point four point E regarding vacations. The grievance.
Should do a roll call.
We'll do a roll call vote. Brian?
Yes.
Chuck?
No.
Yes.
Jason?
No.
Sandra?
No.
Oh, this is.
Kevin.
Just great. You know, I'm gonna, gonna abstain.
You can.
Oh, I have to, I have.
You have a conflict of interest?
No.
Nope, I heard a no.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, then you need to say yes or no, please.
Oh, gosh. I will, I, I, I'll say yes.
Have you voted? And I will say, yes, I will uphold your decision. So that is four to three. Motion carries. Is there anything else to come before the board?
Well, I would like to, if, we, can we throw out ideas? I mean, I really would like. Okay, that's fine.
It will just. Yeah, we can't have any.
I agree.
Okay, uh, meaning in turn.